I have a quick question while everybody's gathering. How many of you, when you went to class, sat in the back row? Yes, yeah, we got some back row people. How many of you sat in the front row when you went? Yeah. I figured, I was a back row student in high school and a front row student in college. And there was four years in the Navy in between. So, um, yeah, I knew that I, I knew that I didn't want to blow my one chance. All right, I think that we are, um, ready to get started. Do we have our online community? How many people do we have online? We'd like to say hi to everybody from our online community. Can everybody wave and give a shout? Maybe they may not be able to see you, but they can hear you. All right. We are glad you're here today. Let's open with the word of prayer. Lord, we thank you that this is the day that you have made. We will rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, we just welcome, uh, 2023. Uh, we thank you for all the good things that we experienced in 2022. And we say goodbye to all the bad things that we experienced in 2022. And we look forward to new grace and to new mercy and to new, uh, experiences, to new relationships, to new blessings in 2023. So today, as we, uh, walk through this agenda, we ask for your spirit to guide us and for your blessings to be upon us in Jesus' name. Amen. Okay, I'd like to start by anybody who's bold enough to share with us a New Year's resolution that you have made. Anybody? We have one right here. Lose weight. Okay, now you know the follow-up question. How many of you have joined in the New Year's resolution to lose weight? Yes, uh, my hands up. Okay, my hands up. Okay, great. Jan has a New Year's resolution.
I want to stay in the present more.
Oh, wow. No more, no more harping on the past or tripping on the future. Yes. Let's be present. That's awesome. Anybody else? Now, come on, I know that, I know that there's more than two New Year's res- oh, yes, Janet has one. Oh, my goodness. Oh, my goodness. Oh, boy. I want to be quick to listen and slow to speak. Wow, yes. Um, oh, that's a good. Shoot your age in golf. That's, that's a great goal. That's a great goal. Super. Anybody else? One, we got one more.
I want to read more books on history, biography and poetry.
Read more books. That's awesome. That's a great goal. Well, uh, we pray that the, the blessing of the Lord will be on all of us as we, um, resolve, uh, for 2023 to be a great year. So thank you very much for sharing those things. Um, each month, we have this amazing privilege to recognize really, really cool people here. And this month, we are recognizing as the January Star of the Month, Sherri Belcher. I'm going to invite her to come forward and as she does, I'm going to tell you a little bit about her. Sherri began working at Trinity Woods in April of 2021. She was born in Newton, New Jersey, and she was raised in Florida. Um, as a kid, she wanted to be a crime scene investigator. Her favorite sport is tennis. And, um, she is described by others as being always full of energy and a people pleaser. Her hobbies are makeup, crafting and sewing. Her favorite holiday is Halloween. Did, were you involved in, uh, the, the fall festival? That's awesome. That's awesome. Um, uh, her favorite quote is, whatever you are, be a good one. Her favorite recipe is her grandma's, uh, blackberry dumplings. Her favorite movie is Forrest Gump. Yes, um, she collects old glass bottles and river rocks. River rocks. Oh, wow. Oh, that's awesome. So what's, what's the coolest river rock that you found?
I'm not sure. I like all of them.
That's, that's great. That's great. Well, um, a fun fact about Sherri is that she traveled for five years and visited 38 states in one year. Um, Kathy Green says this about Sherri. She's a people pleaser and loves to help the community members, uh, be happy and she does a great job. So we're glad she's part of our team. So we are thrilled to be able to recognize you as the star of the month for January. Congratulations. Thank you so much. That's awesome. Um, we also have the privilege of recognizing significant milestones in employment and, um, uh, this, uh, this month, where we have two people to recognize. Uh, Lillian Boyd is being recognized for five years of service at Trinity Woods. If you'd please come up. And Kathy, Kathy, why don't you come up and, and, uh, and help me out here? Um, and then, uh, Claudia Dilday is also being recognized. Claudia has been serving on the housekeeping team for 10 years. Congratulations. Thank you so much. I'm going to give you these and you can award them. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Okay, if we could give a warm, uh, round of applause, uh, we are so grateful. Thank you very, very much. All right, that is, that is awesome. So there are basically three things that I'd like to talk about, uh, this morning. Um, the first thing that I want to talk about is I published an article at, um, at Kerry Matheson's request on the culture of courtesy that we seek to promote at Trinity Woods. Um, a number of years ago, right after we had gone through the expansion that, uh, that, that brought, um, that opened Crestwood, um, we convened a, basically a summit that involved board members, staff members and community members. And as a part of that process, we went through a very interesting exercise. We identified eight behaviors that are detrimental to a healthy sense of community in an organization. And those behaviors are triangulating, distancing, conflict, over-functioning, under-functioning, sabotage, cutting off and bullying. And we determined as a group that these behaviors are so detrimental that we committed to each other to hold each other accountable so that whenever we witnessed these behaviors, we would actually feel the freedom as a community to call them out and identify them. And this experience was very impactful for all of us because we recognized that we are all tempted to engage in these behaviors from time to time. Um, some of these behaviors, we may be more prone to than others. But all of us recognized that we would do well, not just in the relationships at Trinity Woods, but with all the relationships that we have, uh, at church, in our family, in, with our neighbors, uh, in the workplace. And we have added these, uh, this culture, these, this culture of courtesy guidelines document that's being handed out. We've added these right along with our mission statement, our vision and our values as core principles by which Trinity Woods is going to operate. And, um, these things are really hard to uphold, but they're very, very worthwhile. And so I wanted to take the opportunity as we enter 2023, as we welcome all of the new people who have moved into our community in, in the past year, to reaffirm these values and, um, to, uh, to advocate that each one of us, um, take personal inventory and recognize, um, the need for us to change behaviors when they're detrimental to community. So I'm delighted to be able to distribute this and, um, I would appreciate it if you would review it again, if you haven't seen it. And I welcome those of you for whom this is new information, um, to, uh, uh, to take a look at it. So thank you very much. The second thing I want to talk about is how the Grinch stole Christmas. Um, so on Christmas Eve morning, in the, in the days right before Christmas, Oklahoma experienced for the second time in two years, almost unprecedented weather. Um, we had, uh, temperatures and wind chills that were, um, that were significant. And, um, a, we had three problems on the Trinity Woods campus that were all connected with the fire sprinkler systems. Uh, one of those problems occurred in the Marshall Gaddy House. One of those problems occurred in the Holloman Building and one of those problems occurred in the Crestwood Building. I want to take the opportunity to commend the security and maintenance staffs for their rapid response in all three of these situations. If the response has not, had not been as rapid as it was, the damage from the water would have been much more severe than it was. Um, fortunately, uh, we were able to intervene in real time and stop the water flow and to immediately begin to assess the situation. So in the Marshall Gaddy House, um, the leak really only required the relocation of one person temporarily. In the, in the Holloman Building, the leak actually occurred behind the reception desk and so no one was displaced. In Crestwood, the leak actually occurred, uh, in a fourth floor apartment. And when the, when the sprinkler system is activated, a fire pump, uh, creates a level of water pressure that is intended to put out a fire. And if you don't have a fire, it's, it, it creates a tremendous, uh, amount of disruption. So it flooded the fourth floor apartment, it flooded the third floor apartment, it flooded the second floor apartment, and it flooded the first floor apartment. The fourth floor apartment was unoccupied and there was no carpeting in most of the apartment. That caused the problem to spread, uh, in a way, uh, that affected adjacent apartments and even affected a couple of other apartments that weren't immediately adjacent. Um, once we stabilized the situation, we basically relocated the people who were most directly affected and provided hotel accommodations for them until we could relocate them to other vacant apartments in Crestwood, which we did. So we arranged for a mover to come in and to relocate everybody. We engaged a restoration company that is working with us to see to it that we do the best that we can to restore what can be restored and to take care of whatever water damage might have occurred to personal effects. And we immediately began to dry out the space and to assess the root cause of the situation. So everyone has been relocated and work is currently underway to, um, restore the apartments that were damaged by water. Um, in some cases, the sheet rock damage is extensive. And, um, so, and in, in all of the cases, most of the carpeting has to be replaced. And, uh, in some cases where there was a wood floor, the wood floor has to be replaced. So you've seen the dumpster outside, it's been filled several times. Um, that's the reason, uh, that, that this has happened. Um, we're mindful of the fact that this is not the first time that this has happened. It actually happened in February of 2021 when we had a similar severe weather event where the temperatures were actually below zero for several days. Um, and many people have asked, well, how could this happen two times? Um, we immediately instituted a evaluation that's being conducted by the architect and by the designer of the sprinkler system, the engineering company that designed the sprinkler system. And we believe that we have identified the root cause and we have a plan in place that will address two things. The first thing that it will address is that we will, we will take immediate steps to, um, uh, to, to, uh, prevent, uh, airflow through a fixture that surrounds the headings on the sprinkler pipes that, that are, that, that are exposed to the outside. And we're, we're reasonably confident that we can do that quickly so that there's no risk this winter for another similar occurrence. We also have a plan for a longer term solution that, that, um, that will, uh, that will require more extensive work. But we have a short-term intervention and a longer term solution that we, uh, that we expect to, uh, implement. With that, I think I've shared all of the prepared comments that I have. I would be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have at this point about the frozen pipes at Christmas.
The solutions that you just mentioned, is that applicable to the other two, the Holloman and, uh, the Gaddy House?
Um, it's a great question. So the question was, was it the same issue in the other areas? No, it was not the same issue. Um, we actually think that the, that the Marshall Gaddy, uh, 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 pipe issue, uh, w- w- could be covered by the warranty that, that's still in existence on the building. And, um, it was the issue, uh, that occurred in Holloman was unrelated to the same problems that occurred in Crestwood. Okay, if anybody has any further questions about this, I would invite you to direct them to Dennis Graham or to me. Um, we'd be happy to address those questions. Uh, this is an ongoing process, of course, and our commitment, um, to, uh, to everybody is to do all that we can to see to it that people, uh, get back into their residence as quickly as possible. There is one other thing, and that is, um, several questions have been asked about the fire alarm response in Crestwood. And I want to take a minute, uh, to address that. So when the alarm is activated, and I, I think it might be helpful for you to understand kind of behind the scenes what our response is when a fire alarm is activated. So when that alarm is activated, excuse me, a text message is sent immediately to key staff people, including security, maintenance and the chief operating officer, Dennis Graham. In addition, the fire, there's a fire alarm company that monitors the system. And that company monitors the system 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The fire alarm company immediately connects with those people that I mentioned. Dennis Graham, the maintenance staff, uh, and the fire department. And security assesses the situation on the ground here, locating the area of concern. So when the, when the alarm is sounded, it gives a specific reference to the location of where the problem is occurring. In this initial period, when the situation is being assessed by the people on premises, everyone in the building is urged to shelter in place unless directed otherwise by the first responders. We recognize that sometimes it takes a while to assess the situation and to silence the alarm. Frequently, and this is important to note, frequently after the alarm is silenced, the system is being reset. And during that period of resetting the alarm, the fire alarm will sound a second time. This is a normal part of the procedure. I know it's frustrating. I know it's an annoyance, but it's a normal part of the procedure. So unless there's a visible cause for concern, like you see smoke or you feel heat, sheltering in place is the best option. Um, I just wanted to go over that as a reminder and then to see if there are any questions that you might have about that process as well. Okay, very well. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dennis Graham, who is going to make a special introduction, I think.
Good morning. Before we get into, uh, introduction, I'd just, if I could, I'd just like to co-tell Steve's, uh, conversation with you on, uh, uh, fire alarms, fire responses and things like that. And so what I would like to do is just talk real quickly about a couple of things not to do. Um, and it was touched on a little bit, and then I want to give you the definition of why. Number one, um, I looked in the Sarah report this morning before I came to this meeting. We had 37 people push their pendant on the night of Christmas Eve to get information. So please don't do that. Please don't push your pendant expecting security to respond to give information. The pendant is specifically for emergencies only and they have to treat every one of those calls as an emergency only in the, in the midst of trying to find out where all this water's pouring down at. So please don't push your pendant in that case unless you truly are ill, maybe a, a heart issue or something like that, and you feel like you need medical attention, please push your pendant. For information? No. For an emergency, please do. Um, the second thing is Steve talked to you kind of about the sequence of events of how the fire alarm responds and notifies me, notifies Ty and all of the individuals. Um, so the first instinct, I believe, when the fire alarm goes off is for those of you who didn't push your pendant, thank you, uh, is to call security. And what that does is that And what that does is that jams up the phone. I can't call him from off campus to figure out what's going on. So when the fire alarm goes off, please don't call security. Do exactly what Steve asked you to do, and that is shelter in place. And if there's an issue, the fire department or the first responders, they're going to come if there's an issue. They're going to knock on doors, they're going to help people get downstairs. But if you do physically see smoke, go ahead and get yourself down. But please don't call security. If you call security at two o'clock in the morning to try to get information of what's going on, I can't call security to find out what they need. So I need to be able to keep that line open. So please don't call security. All of our fire alarms have dialers on them, and what Steve was saying is, is they call me immediately. But at the same time, they're also dispatching the fire department if it's showing that we have water flow or something like that. So it's about a four step process. Remember, if it's an emergency, pressure pendant. If it's not, please don't. If, if it's an emergency and you pressed your pendant, you need to call security. Call security, but please don't call security gaining information. When you jam that phone lineup, I can't get to them to figure out what's going on on campus, to see what resources they need. And I'm the one typically, a lot of times, who will make the decision of whether to send the fire department or not. A lot of times the alarm will go off. They will call me to say, hey, do you, are you on campus? Do you know what's going on? And I say, no, send the fire department immediately. Other times they'll call me and I need to be able to communicate with security to tell them where to go. So please don't call security. Yes, Richard? Which smoke detectors? No. They are specifically for your villa. They are a notification for you only. They will not notify, they're not connected to a fire alarm, fire system or anything like that. Neither are the fire smoke detectors in Crestwood apartments. Those are specifically for the apartments. Every time a piece of toast is burnt, we can't have the fire department respond. So those are connected specifically for those apartments to alert you. If you open the door and that smoke gets out in the corridor and it hits one of our common area of smoke detectors, it's going to dial the fire department immediately. It's going to call the alarm company. Okay, so all the public corridors are tied into the fire alarm. The things in your apartments are not tied to the fire alarm. Okay? Yes?
A long time to arrive. I mean, there were four fire trucks, but everything was over by that time.
I, I don't, I, I'll have to go back and review that. I don't, I don't know what time the fire department arrived. I have to look at the security report. Yeah, I know the whole event from the time we got the water shut off was, you know, within 10 or 11 minutes. Yep. Now, just because we shut the water off doesn't mean it stops pouring. You know, the, the building drains all the way down. If it happens on the fourth floor, it's going to, it's going to drain all the way down. Any other questions on that? Yes?
Is there any way that an audible message can be sent when something like this happens? Connected with the alarm. I was in Span by myself when the garage flooded or the water was there. So I left because I didn't know what was going on. Is there any way that it could say what's happening?
There's not really an audible. The audible is the horns and strobes that, that you hear and see. That's the only audible. There is an audible feature we can connect to it, but here's what it's going to say. Fire alarm exit, fire alarm. It's going to be a computerized voice that's going to tell you what to do. It's not going to give you the result of what happened. Yeah. Yes?
Dennis, I've been asked, is there a chance that, like for Crestwood, that the alarm for fire would be a different alarm than from water breaks and the other as people come pouring out of their rooms at two o'clock in the morning?
It's a great, it's a great question, but here, here's the complication. Water flow is a significant meaning to the fire department. And in their mind, if water's flowing, you've got a fire. Now, they're smart enough to know that if it's minus 20 degree wind chill, if you got water flow, you might have a flood. You know, you might, you may have something. But you can't change the universal audibles based off of whether it's a flood or whether it's a fire. Because it all goes through the same piping, it all goes through the same devices. It all goes through the same monitors, everything. So it has to just be one universal symbol. Yep.
Dennis, there's an online question asking if the SARAP tendents can be used as a messaging?
No, not the SARAP tendents, but the SARAP system can be used as an update after the event is over to let you know what happened or everything's safe. So yes, we can, we can, we can work on a SARAP message. Yes. Yep. Okay.
Dennis?
Dennis?
Yes?
Are the smoke detectors in our houses also CO2 detectors?
We have CO2 detectors in the houses, yes.
Is it the same as the smoke detector?
No, separate. Should have a separate detector.
Hey Dennis?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll check on that for sure. Yes.
I just one comment. I noticed when the fire department came in, they came in and they were just like, what are we doing? Where's the control panel for the fire system? Security did not know it. I had to show the security system, our people, where that, that system is.
We just, Mark and I just had a meeting about that just before I came to here, Mark and Ron and I. So we're going to, we're going to do some additional training and we're going to do some updates. We're also going to bring in maintenance to, typically, security is not in charge of shutting off water and those type of things. But I think we're going to change that to where, when we have a scenario like that, that we will have ability to turn water. Security will have the ability and the knowledge of where to turn the water off. Yeah. They don't have, yes. Yes. Yeah, the elevators automatically, usually they automatically revert to the basement and then the doors will open. So if a fire alarm goes off, don't ever get in an elevator. That's a, that's a great point. Just get in the stairwell if you can't get down the stairs. It's a good safe haven and to secure yourself in the stairwell. And then the fire department's always going to come up the stairwell. If they come, if we do have a fire event. And they also will come and on the outside of the building, there's a Knox box. That's where we store the elevator keys. So fire department's universal, they know where it's at. They can get in there and take over the elevator. Yep. Yes. And Kay, I'll check and see, I'll check on the, the location of where those CO2s are. I'll make sure we, yeah.
Dennis, will you, can you maybe elaborate where they are in Crestwood for those residents?
Smoke detectors?
CO2 detectors.
Okay, so you will have, I don't believe there'll be CO2 in Crestwood because you don't have any kind of a gas operated device. You don't have any flames or anything like that. Everything you have in Crestwood is, is correct. Plus, it's geothermal, so it's just going through a heat pump. Yeah, electric heat pump. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we do have them in the elevators though. They're, they're in the elevators for the parking garage. Yeah, yes. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to something a little more exciting. So Allison, if you could come up real quick. And so I want to introduce you all to Allison McMillan. She's our new wellness manager. For those of you who have stopped by and have, have been able to visit with Allison, thank you very much. For those of you haven't, please do so. Allison was born and raised in Garden City, Kansas, and most recently lived until she moved to Tulsa and Wichita. She received her bachelor's degree or master's degree from Wichita State University. It was in her last year of school when she had an internship at the YMCA. So she went through and worked for the YMCA in, in the Wichita area for many years. She fell in love with fitness and working with people to strengthen their minds, bodies and spirits. So those three words right there should fit right in here. She recently just moved to Tulsa in her spare time. Allison loves to crochet and participate in the Society for Creative. And this is a tough word. You guys got to bear with me. Anarchism? Anachronism? I prefer SCA is easier for me. And I'm going to let her explain that to you here in just a second. Where they, where they do frequent and regular medieval reenactment, reen reenactments. She's grateful to be working here and looking forward to getting to know everyone. She's been here a couple of weeks. We've, she's kind of been in the discovery mode. And hopefully in the next couple of weeks, you guys will all get by and visit with her and let her know your, your needs. She's prepared to provide you anything you need from a wellness standpoint. Or any, and she will look at any programming that you guys feel like that you would, would like or need. And please help me welcome Allison to our community. Thank you. So I'm going to let her give, give, give you guys a little bit of a message and explain SCA.
Hi, everybody. In terms of wellness, this is my first time working with this demographic. I've worked with older adults at the YMCA, but it's been at a more general population setting. So I feel like I've got a lot to learn, but I'm super excited. I'm super ready for this. I'm in information gathering stage, as Dennis said, so I'm asking a lot of questions, trying to figure everything out. I sent out a survey. If you guys got it, I'd super appreciate if you took some time to fill it out and bring it back to me at the Span Center or put it in the little reservation boxes. Those will get back to me. It's going to help me kind of figure out what everybody likes, what everybody wants, help me moving forward. Looking to do some schedule stuff, event stuff, program stuff, challenges, all that fun jazz. In terms of the SCA, so like he said, it's basically medieval battle reenactments. I have a bunch of friends who do sword fighting, so they put armor on and they beat each other up with sticks and it's kind of fun to watch. I don't do that. I'm on the arts and crafts side, so like I said, I do crochet. I'm learning how to sew, so I'm putting together some costumes. They don't like it if you call it costumes though. You have to call it garb. I learned that the hard way. But yeah, we're actually getting ready to go to an event this weekend and we got a lot of events around town. And it's pretty fun. It's just something I like to do in my free time. So if anybody has questions about fitness, wellness, about the Span Center, about me, about the SCA, just come drop by and I'll be hanging out and I'd love to meet everybody.
Thank you very much. So you guys get all your garb together and your sticks and go see Allison. There was one question online that, that's, Jacob, you may, I may need your help on this. The question is, where are all the AEDs located on campus? I know of one in the Wellness Center. Are there others?
We do have others, but they're mobile. So that's the only one that's stationary.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, Bonnie?
Good morning. How are you guys? On your chairs, I wanted to make sure that you guys were all aware of our new referral program for the 2023. And also let you know that last year we had a great year in sales, actually is the most sales we've had in a year since Crestwood opened. So in independent living. So we're really excited and kind of to highlight that. If you are brand new to the community in 2022, if you are able and would like to, would you please stand? Or I know there's an upcoming member that's technically going to be new in 2023. Please stand if you are new in the last year to Trinity Woods. The majority of people who are standing knew somebody who lived here. And, or the other thing I love is one of the people who stood came to an event and you guys said, let me show you my apartment. And that they just loved it and loved how welcoming you were. So we know that you are an amazing asset to the sales team. So with that being said, we'd love to reward you as part of the sales team. And we have the referral program. If you refer a friend, you get $2,000 towards your monthly service fee if they move in. And we also, for every, every month at Town Hall, we will do a $100 cash drawing for anybody who's turned in a referral in the last month. So I have three referrals and I'm going to go over real quick what a referral is. We call it a qualified referral. It is somebody who you know, you've spoken to about Trinity Woods. They've asked you questions. You are, they are okay with you giving them our, your, their contact information so we can reach out as well as they know we are going to contact them. It's super fun to get cards that, these are all my friends, but don't call them. That doesn't count as a referral. We're happy to, you know, put them in the database, but if we cannot actively contact them, that is not considered a referral. So know that when you give us their name, we're reaching out to them. It's always helpful if you tell them we're going to reach out to them. So thank you for that in advance. Last year, you guys, there were 69 referrals done by the community. So thank you guys for that. We could not do that without you. So the other thing is, oh, the one thing I'd like to clarify is some of you have talked about, well, I turned in a name, but you said you already had it. How that works is if it is a name we already have, that we have what the term is called lost lead, like they haven't engaged with us in so long. And, and you're saying, you know what, they weren't ready, they are now, that will count as a referral. So don't give, we don't like to give up on people unless people say, give up on me. Or they just actively don't engage for over two years. So know that we're don't, if you feel like you've given a name and you want to check on it, please call us. We're happy to reactivate a lead. But I'm going to have Steve pick for a $100 winner. Jane Mansfield is our $100 winner. So thank you, Jane, for turning in a referral. I left referral cards out here. They are also in Span Wellness and the sales office. And then lots of flyers if you guys want to know more about the program. But thank you in advance for helping us sell our wonderful community.
And with that, I'm going to invite Kay Owens and Raleigh Rhodes to come up. They're going to share a wrap up on the employee committee, employee appreciation results from the efforts of the committee last year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Plaid and argyle, are we with it? Okay. The slide you're seeing now is from the employee appreciation party. And you can see that people are having a good time. The volunteers members are having a great time and the employees had a great time. Okay? Okay, these, this is what everybody wants to know. Independent living participation was 88%, which you can look over at the participation by where you live on campus. Crestwood 87%. participation by uh loc- where you live on campus. Crestwood eighty-seven percent. Uh, Holloman Center was seventy-three percent. So I think, I think that's, that's good. We're aiming for a hundred percent, and uh we can get to a hundred percent, I have a feeling. Uh, the big thing to me is ninety-one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars raised from your contributions. I think we need to give you a big hand. And looking at this, you can probably see what my goal is gonna be next year. Um, none of this would be done without you. None of this would be done without the volunteers. And I think we have a slide with a pic. There's some of the volunteers, but here's the names. And I would like for all of you to stand up once more. Well, if you volunteered for, if your name is up here, please stand up. Thank you, thank you. And we are planning on you doing it next year, plus some new people. We always need new blood. Uh, the average gift from uh the residents was four hundred and thirty-two dollars. The average gift to the employee was three hundred and forty-three dollars. And some of them get less than that, and some of them get more than that, but it's determined by your length of employment. So uh, we had a seventeen percent increase from last year in the funds raised. And um, I'm just real pleased. Are you pleased, Raleigh?
Ecstatic.
And I just want you to be thinking about something. In addition to what I, I think my goal will be next year, um, every time in this, in 2023, when somebody, some employee does something that you think is over and beyond what they're expected to do. Think about that when you're making your pledge next year. Or you can even pledge all during 2023. You can pledge, I mean, you're not pledging. The campaign is one thing. We raise money all year. If, say, this em- employee does something you would really like to acknowledge, you can make a donation to the Employee Appreciation Fund. They will get a notice that you have made that donation in their honor. And I think that's really a nice thing that you can do. And I encourage you to do that, and those funds are used during the year for little special things that we might do for the employees. Trinity Woods does them, but it's from the members' donations, like maybe a free lunch or um, just all kinds of things. They'll have little parties, they'll have little um challenges, and anything that they are given that costs money comes from that fund. So think about that. Dr. Rhodes?
Is there anything else left for me to say? No, I, she's given the specifics and um, I just want to thank the Trinity Woods residents for such a successful uh 2022 Employee Appreciation Fund campaign. In 2019, the Development Committee of the Trinity Woods Board decided to switch from a staff-led format to a resident-led format. And an Employee Appreciation Fund Committee uh of approximately thirty-five people, residents, developed a one-on-one approach to uh encourage one another in giving. As a result, we went from fifty-eight thousand in twenty eighteen to ninety-one thousand in twenty twenty-two. So thanks to the cooperation and giving spirit of the president, residents of uh Trinity Wood. We all thank you.
And we thank Bonnie Pollak. Nothing could be done without her.
Thank you so much. It was a great joy to be uh, to attend both of those uh events and just to see the deep appreciation that was expressed by everyone who uh, who participated. So yeah, so um, part of what happens with the Employee Appreciation Fund is that um, there are funds set aside in the event that somebody has a financial emergency. They can go to Human Resources and submit a special request for a grant from that fund uh to help with that need. And so that's also a, a great blessing. Uh, the Emergency Fund, yeah, Employee Emergency Fund, sure. Okay, um, with that, um, uh, I just want you to know how delighted I am uh, to be able to wish you a happy Friday and a great weekend, and um hope you have an enjoyable rest of your day. Take care, everybody.